I do send a flyer.
Went ahead and gave the thumbs up.
And a letter. And that's all I can be.
That's all you should.
Okay, we are, we are on the air.
We are recording.
Yeah.
That's why I brought it.
You're welcome.
He came out and introduced himself for that help.
Okay.
My opinion has not changed.
Have they had problem with people eating the mic?
What?
Says please don't eat the mic.
Oh, so they took our little covers off. It is dinner time, you know, getting kind of close to snack time.
However, this would be a good time to remind everyone to bring the mic forward.
But they took off our, our covers.
I know, I.
They're not afraid of us anymore?
I, I don't know, and they took these away too.
Yeah.
Which must be really helpful for you.
Really, it is. Yeah. Really, because of the glare. You don't have any idea how that kind of messes things up. Yay, she likes you. Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for October the 13th. Tonight's invocation will be led by Commissioner Walker and the pledge will be led by Commissioner Greenway. Please join us.
His bow. Heavenly Father, thank you for your amazing power and works in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and your blessings over us all. Guide us in our discussions, enlighten our minds in every decision that we make this evening. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our part as public servant. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. We encourage you to wear your mask while indoors and observe the six-foot social distancing requirements. We also, as you come in and you, and if you're going to speak, just make sure everybody is speaking directly and clearly into the microphone.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Starter, would you like to call the roll?
Raymond?
Here.
Janet?
Here.
Erickson? Stafford? Scott? Gerke? Greenway?
Here.
Lamond?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Hobby?
Present, thank you. We understand that you have strong feelings one way or another. Out of courtesy, unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or any other verbal outburst. This is a fact-finding hearing. If the previous speaker states a point in which you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so the hearing may proceed. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If the applicant will have five minutes to speak, all other speakers will have three minutes. Please respect the time limit. If you intend to speak, please sign up at the back table and your name will be called in the order you signed up. May I have a motion for approval of last month's minutes?
I move we approve last month's minute with the change to show Commissioner Bill Lamond was present.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. The first item on tonight's agenda is, is the consent agenda. Items placed in this section are applications of which demonstrate compliance with all applicable city requirements. These items shall not involve discussion by the Planning Commission or the public. The consent agenda will be voted on in one motion. However, if any two commissioners desire, individual items may be discussed and/or voted upon as a separate matter of business. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's consent agenda with the staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Director Selman, will you read in the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Item number one is applicant Mr. Michael McHenry, representing property owner Natural State Contractors. This is a request for preliminary subdivision plat and development plan approval for a new five lot, single-family residential subdivision known as McHenry State's subdivision. The recommendation is for approval with six conditions. I'm going to read the conditions into the record. All construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with approved preliminary plat and development plan. These conditions of approval and all applicable technical codes and specifications, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, full and continuous compliance with all applicable stormwater permitting and water quality regulations. Number three, the planning director shall be authorized to sign the preliminary plat and development plans listing these conditions of approval and work shall not proceed until the preliminary plat has been so executed. Number four, the additional fire hydrant must be installed or bonded prior to execution of the final plat for this subdivision. Number five, no permits will be issued and the sale of lots shall not occur until a final plat meeting the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 16, 444, has been approved by the planning director and filed for record with Garland County Circuit Clerk and an original copy of the filed plat returned to the Planning Department office. And number six, approval of this preliminary plat and development plan is valid until October 13, 2024. And prior to this date, the developer may request in writing an extension of up to one year. Item two, the applicant is Stacy Roberts, Central Lanes of Hot Springs LLC, is seeking Article II Large-Scale Development Site Plan Approval to construct a new bowling alley and arcade at 4766 Central Avenue on approximately 1.358 acres. This is Zoned R4. The recommendation is for approval with, I believe, seven conditions? Yes? The conditions are, I'll read them all. Number one, all construction and construction activity is to be accomplished in strict accordance with the approved site and development plans as well as with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number two, separate permit application shall be made by the applicant to Hot Springs Engineering Department and permits shall be in hand for stormwater drainage and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. Number three, the dumpster enclosure must meet the requirements of Hot Springs Code, Section 9, 111, Subsection 3. Number four, before building permits can be issued, the development plans shall contain, A, a plan and profile for the proposed ready rock retaining wall, and B, shall provide details for the detention pond. Number five, a separate sign permit application, review, approval, and permit shall be required prior to installation of any signs. Number six, all site lighting shall be fully downcast, fully shielded, designed and installed so that all artificial illumination is retained on site. And number seven, multiple building or a large-scale site plans approved by the Planning Commission shall be effective for one year from the date of approval. Prior to its expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. This approval shall be effective until October 13, 2023.
Thank you, Director. At this time, do, all those in favor of the consent agenda? Is there action on this one?
There, there is action. You, you may want to have a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Janet?
Aye. In favor, yes, vote.
Greenway?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Raymond?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is new business. There will be opportunity for the applicant and for the public to provide testimony. Director Selman, will you introduce item number three?
Thank you. Item number three is RZ 22280, a zone change request to correct an error in previous city action for property located at 401 Birchwood Bay Road. The request is to correct the zoning from RL, Lake Area Residential District, to PD, Plan Development.
Thank you. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve in second does not mean that you are necessarily in favor of the particular item. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Director Selman, will you please present item number three?
Thank you. The City of Hot Springs is the applicant for the purpose of correcting the zoning map to depict PD, Plan Development District zoning for approximately .2 acres of land located at 401 Birchwood Bay Road as originally intended in the land use spreadsheet, page 20, which was considered upon initial zoning for all properties in Annexation A. It was an approval, the annexation was approved in 2015. A mapping error exists. This is a very rare, very weird situation. Years ago, the Board of Directors sought to consolidate un, well, unincorporated Garland County land that was surrounded on all sides by City of Hot Springs and Lake Hamilton. This was in one of those areas. The procedure for annexation includes taking the land in, giving it a temporary zone, which is typically R1, and then, in a separate ordinance, initial zoning is proposed for the land. The method that was used to decide upon that initial zone district to be assigned to the annexed areas consisted of three visits to each parcel in the annexation area. There were hundreds of these parcels. And the, the information that was gathered on those site visits was put into a spreadsheet. And that spreadsheet for this land recommended that it and land also owned by the same owner next door be zoned PD, Plan Development. An exhibit accompanied the ordinance, which was prepared also by the city, and that exhibit was a map, which colored this particular thing differently from what was intended in the spreadsheet and the site visits. So a mapping error exists. One great thing about the existing code we have is that it does provide that mapping error condition to be a standard for rezoning without further findings. So, a mapping error does exist and we recommend that the zoning be corrected from RL, which is on the map today, to PD, Plan Development District, due to this previous error in city action. Of course, your action is a recommendation to the Board of Directors and it is up to the Board of Directors to take final action. But your recommendation is a strong first step in correcting this error.
Thank you, Director. Do we have anybody signed up on this particular item?
No ma'am.
I think it's amazing only one mistake was made. It was a huge project. Yeah. Will the applicant now, please come forward, state your name and address?
That's me.
Okay, so we don't go through them. Kathy, it's over there, I'm just kidding.
I can't go that far.
Well, then we'll just go, we'll skip right ahead.
We don't get to question Kathy?
You may.
That's my next question. If you dare. Mr. President, we have any questions?
How did you find the error?
The, interesting story, maybe, maybe not. The owner called and said that he wanted to do a, a short-term rental. And we looked at the zoning. He was under one set of rules if he was zoned an R. He was not under those rules if he was zoned PD. And at that point, we said, well, you're zoned RL. And he said, no, I'm not, I'm PD. I met with you, you told me PD, you know, it's on the thing, yes, it was. So we were wrong and we need to fix it. So.
Any other questions? Okay, just to clarify, the motion on the floor is to approve item number three with the staff report and findings and recommendation. Mr. Starter, will you call the roll?
Greenway?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Raymond?
Approved.
Janet?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you. Director Selman, will you please introduce item number four?
Thank you. Item number four is RZ 22285. This is a zone change request from R4 Medium High Density Residential District and C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District to CTR, Commercial Transitional District. It's located approximately 520 Lake Shore Drive.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets the matter on the floor for discussion. A motion to approve in a second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of this particular application. May I have a motion to approve item number four?
So moved. Second.
Second.
Director Selman, will you please present item number four?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is John Rogers, Craft and Toll. He's requesting CTR, Commercial Transitional zoning, excuse me, for approximately 15.77 acres of land on Lake Shore Drive and Aviation Plaza. The subject property is currently Zoned R4 Medium High Density Residential and C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District. There is an approved site plan, SPA 21176, for 30 cabins. This has a future land use classification of medium, residential medium high and community commercial center. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Four. Planning Commission approved the site plan, 21176, in 2021. Not even a year ago. At that time, the owner stated his intent to operate short-term rental cabins. Six months following that approval, the Board of Directors amended the short-term residential rental ordinance by reducing the 500-unit cap in residential zones to 400. Given that nearly 400 licenses will be issued before the end of this year, the applicant believes it is unlikely that short-term rental licenses now will be available for his cabins, rendering his approved project unfeasible. And, and we are poised to exceed 400 very quickly. His assumption is correct. So.
Thank you.
The, well, no, there's more. This is another project, you will, you will never see this again, I bet. To do the project that he proposes in CTR requires site plan approval. He's got an approved site plan. The only thing that has changed is the number of short-term residential rental licenses will now be capped at 400 rather than 500. When the applicant came forward, the site plan he proposed for 30 cabins was clearly eligible for short-term residential rental licenses. But then the cap was changed. Again, when we look at the standards for changing a zone district, one of those standards is that there is a change in economic, physical land use or other condition. It's very unusual for a use that is okay in a zone to suddenly become not okay, not through a land use action, but by another action. In this case, the capping of residential licenses at a lower number than when he came into the game. So, as always, if the change to CTR is approved, the full range of CTR uses would be possible. But it does remove the applicant's project from the cap. And remember, he was fine until the cap changed. He had an approved site plan before the cap changed. So his, his request is to rezone to CTR. And here's a finding. The current future land use map designation of residential medium high is consistent with the surrounding properties, surrounding zone properties and land uses. The applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration are met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and responds to a significant change in economic or other conditions and is consistent with the zoning code objectives. The recommendation to Planning Commission is that Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Directors adoption of an ordinance amending the zoning map to designate the subject property CTR, Commercial Transitional, because Planning Commission has made a specific finding that the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, responds to a significant change in economic or other conditions, and the change is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code as required by Hot Springs Code, Section 16211E.
Thank you, Director. Do we have anybody signed up? Will the applicant now please come forward? State your name and address. Is there anything you'd like to add to the record? And you have five minutes for your presentation, sir.
Okay, thank you. My name's John Rogers. I'm with Craft and Toll here in Hot Springs, 928 Airport Road. And I appreciate the, the group here taking our project and listening to it. It is a situation, we, we do feel like that the project brief and, and the submittals do meet with good reasoning. This zone change that we're requesting and appreciate the staff making the, the recommendation for approval. The only thing I would add is that, you know, that does, it makes good sense what we're proposing, but, but it's, the, the financing component here is, is driving this. The, the bank itself, they want more of assurance that we can have this, these units available for our guests to the community. And, and just with that cap, the bank's not comfortable with that. So this was, this removes, this rezone would remove that single obstacle which would allow us to go forward. But the owner, developer is here, Landon Roark and myself, if we can, we can try to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
What are the future plans for development there?
The, the site plan's on file with 30 units, that's what it is. We've got a office with, with security and, and onsite manager and, and so we just wanted, what's presented, what's been approved in the past is what.
And, and so we just wanted, what's presented, um, what's been approved in the past is what, is all, all that we have planned.
Just won't be short, short-term rentals?
It, it will be, yes, sir. It, it'll be short-term rentals.
As originally was, was the purpose of their site plan.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This will, this will reinstate his ability to do that.
Okay, good. That's fine.
How many people? I mean, when it was capped, I mean.
No, these are, this is confusing. It confuses us. So here's, here's the deal. He has an approved site plan. He came to you about a year ago and said, I want to do 30 cabins and rent them short-term. And Planning Commission approved that. You approved everything about that. The utilities, the access, the circulation, the landscaping, everything. No change to that. It's the exact same situation that existed then. What changed, and this is very, very unusual. What changed is another rule regarding short-term rentals. A different ordinance was amended. It had nothing to do with land use, but it prevent, because Mr. Roark, the applicant, is now unable to satisfy his lender that he can do short-term rentals, his ability to start building this is severely inhibited. So the change that makes it possible to consider this zone change is a change in the economic circumstances as defined in the short-term rental ordinance. He will be doing now exactly what he was going to do before. The, the cap is under a whole different ordinance. It's under the Finance Department. There's a cap to the number of short-term rental licenses in any zone that begins with R. R1, R2, R3, R4, RL. He's in one of those zones.
And Ms. Selman, I would, it's an unintended consequence of that.
Absolutely.
Which the cap's fine. It's just this, it really severely impacted.
We're, we're aware of no other person who is impacted in this way by that change to the licensing ordinance.
So because we're changing it to CTR, there is no cap, no matter how long it takes him to get them built. Is that right?
At this time, yes. That is true.
Again, we're just looking at the, the.
Yeah, well, when we first approved it, the cap was, was acceptable to him. Is there a chance that the cap is going to impede his construction again?
Not that cap.
Not with CTR.
He doesn't need a license.
He needs a license.
Yeah, he still needs that.
But there is an unlimited amount of licenses in non-R zones.
Okay.
So Director Selman, one question. We have at times looked at some of the rezoning requests in, in that if it is rezoned to Commercial Transitional, the applicant is afforded additional uses that he would not otherwise have.
That is true.
If he, if he decides he doesn't want to do this, there are other uses for this land that he could do it.
Yes.
Yes, if it's rezoned.
Yes. But in terms of residential uses, the uses in his existing zone and the CTR zone, residential I'm speaking, including, um, multi-unit. What he can do in this zone, he can also do in CTR. If he wants to do a non-residential use, that will have to come to Planning Commission for a site plan approval.
Okay.
All right.
Conditional use.
Because we, we are R4, which is pretty versatile in a residential environment.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, at this time, the public hearing portion is closed. Commissioners, any other discussions we want to have amongst ourselves?
I'm just waiting to get timed out again.
Pete, just be in zone differently. I believe that gives more flexibility.
Yeah.
With regard to the license.
Right.
Yeah.
And just to allude to what Kathy said, if, if something different goes in CTR, it's got to have the site plan, which comes right back to us. Okay, at this time, Mr. Starter, will you call the roll?
On the motion to recommend approval, Lamond?
Approved.
Uh, Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Ramick?
Approved.
Janet?
Approved.
Greenway?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you. Director Selman? Director Selman, will you now please introduce number five?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item number five is a rezon request, 22292, to change, uh, zoning from R2 Suburban Residential District to C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District for split-zoned property located at 825 Airport Road.
Thank you very much. A motion to approve merely gets this matter on the floor. A motion to approve and second does not mean that you're necessarily in favor of the particular applicant.
Selman.
Second.
Director Selman, will you please present item number five?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. The applicant is Mr. Aaron Burrows with Atoka Incorporated, representing property owner, Mr. Pat Hobbs. He is seeking C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District zoning for approximately one acre of land located at 825 Airport Road. The subject property is currently split-zoned with C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District along Airport Road. And in the area farther back from Airport Road, it is zoned R2. It's a future land use classification of residential low and linear commercial corridor. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Four. Uh, the subject property is just east of the Airport Road and Woodall Circle intersection. It's 1.95 acres in total. It's unplatted. The property is split-zoned, uh, C4 approximately an acre on the front half and R2 on the rear half facing Stonewall Street. Each zone district is about an acre. This parcel has 265 feet of frontage on Airport Road and about 87 feet of frontage on Stonewall Street. There's a single-family residence toward the rear of the property. And this request is to make the entire parcel C4. Uh, the surrounding properties and land uses are consistent with C4. And, um, the zoning request demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development or zoning as all surrounding and nearby properties are zoned commercial or manufacturing, except property to the south which is zoned R2. Surrounding developments are of a non-residential nature, consisting of a variety of commercial uses, except for the single-family residence to the south. The requested C4 zone district would be compatible with the majority of surrounding developments and zoning. The proposed rezoning request responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use or other condition in that the Airport Road, Arkansas Highway 70 West area of the city has seen significant commercial development over the past several years. This parcel is located just west of the Hot Springs Municipal Airport and directly across Airport Road from a developing commercial equipment rental site. Businesses in the vicinity recently constructed or currently under construction include our marine bumper to bumper auto parts and a self-storage facility. The future land use designation of residential low does not support the resisted, requested zone change to C4. And a future land use map designation of linear commercial corridor would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification that is consistent with the surrounding C4 zoned properties. The applicant successfully demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for a recommendation to the board that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning and responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use or other conditions. With a future land use plan map amendment to linear commercial corridor, the subject property would have a consistent land use designation and would be consistent with the surrounding C4 zone properties' future land use classifications. Recommendation is that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use or other conditions, and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. And to amend the future land use plan map by designating the subject property Linear Commercial Corridor consistent with surrounding future land use plan map designations. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Director. Please state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Aaron Burrows. I work at Atoka Inc., 554 Mid-America Boulevard. Uh, I'm representing the owner, Pat Hobbs. Pat's here today. Uh, he's, uh, uh, what he's asking to do and what we're wanting to develop the property in is to, uh, for, uh, manufactured home sales. It's pretty simple. I don't, I don't think there's much discussion or argument, but the, the, all of the surrounding properties around this piece of property are already zoned commercial. There was a house on the back of this, half of this piece of property, uh, pictured there. And, uh, that, that was operated as a rental, uh, and it's now vacant and it'll be converted into office space. So other than that, that residence probably would have been zoned commercial to begin with. Uh, but now we're seeking to have it rezoned, uh, consistent with the area and with the front half of the lot to allow Mr. Hobbs to, to do the development that he intends.
Commissioners, any questions?
You're going to load and unload the mobile, well, you might not know, but will Mr. Hobbs load and unload the mobile homes from Airport Road or from one of the side roads?
Most likely from Airport Road. We've, we've, uh, we went ahead and we submitted a full development plan. Didn't have to, to planning development, but we did just to go ahead and have the opportunity to go to the Development Review Committee and get their comments. Uh, they had several comments. We've actually already addressed all their comments. Part of one of their comments was that we'd have to get permit from RDOT. Uh, and we've already, uh, submitted that, had comments, revisions, made a couple revisions. And we now have, ready to submit that permit. No reason that that shouldn't be approved either, but, uh, yes, most likely they'll come from Airport Road. There is limited, the, the map, we've realized that the, the map before you's actually not completely correct. Is there not, there's not as much frontage on Stonehurst in the, in the southeast corner as shows on the, the city, the county tax records. The survey is actually more correct. There's not much, very limited access from Stonehurst. But he may, he probably has enough he can put a gate there.
But it's not necessary.
Not necessary, no ma'am.
Thank you.
And again, the properties around it are manufactured on both sides. And even, even the resident, what's classified as residential south of it is actually a cultured marble. They, they manufactured marble tops, so it's not really even residential area. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody's signed up?
Yeah, one, one more comment, I'm sorry. Uh, we actually met with, uh, the, the only adjacent property owner that it might have been an, an issue was with, we, we met with, uh, Mr. Hobbs came in, we met with him this afternoon. We demonstrated the plans and his concerns and, uh, probably why he's not here tonight. He might, would have been here and spoke, but we, we, um, were proactive and, and met with him. And, and he was content that we were going to address his concerns, so.
And, and really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any questions to talk amongst ourselves?
It would be nice not to have dead land there.
Okay, just to be clear, we have a motion to approve item number five with staff report findings and recommendations. Mr. Starter, will you please call the roll?
Davis?
Approved.
Walker?
Approved.
Ramick?
Approved.
Janet?
Approved.
Greenway?
Approved.
Lamond?
Approved.
Hobby?
Approved, thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is the Director's Report.
Right, and, uh, the, the rezones on tonight's agenda will be heard by the Board on November 1st. Okay, I do have a Director's Report.
Yay.
Uh, two things. First is a code-forward website link is live. There is a link from the city's website. On the front page, there is not much content there yet. But that will be changing soon. So I just want you to know that it's there and that is the place to go to see how things are developing there. And if you haven't been already, you should be contacted by Camero's, probably either Arista or Chris, for your interview time about the new code.
I haven't been.
Okay, well, if you, if you haven't been, you will be. The, all of your contact information was provided to them. So just keep in mind, uh, the things that have been bugging you about the code or things that you absolutely love, should there be such a thing. Those are, those are fodder for that conversation. So, um, thank you for agreeing to, uh, participate with them. And this will be one of the first steps as we assess the code that we have in order to make sure that the code that we get takes us where we want to go and we don't repeat the mistakes of the past. So you are, you're in a good spot to know where the problems are in the code. And thank you for your help on that. And that, that is all I have.
I have a question. Well, the zoning people, Camero's, work with the affordable housing people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We met.
That's been bothering me.
We met with the, uh, housing guy, Mr. Archimbo, this afternoon and made specific provision that that be done so that the left hand and the right hand are doing the same type of thing.
What about with the new HUD director for the area? Have you met her yet?
I don't know that there is a new HUD director for the area.
There is.
So I'm going to say no, I haven't met her.
Okay.
Are you talking about the Housing Authority?
Yeah.
Yes, I have met her.
Okay.
Dr. Lambert.
Right.
Yes, I have met her.
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't think she'd been assigned it.
Any other ca, questions, comments?
I have a question. Would you clarify what you said is to be presented to the Directors, you said, at the beginning?
Um, about the rezoning?
Yes.
The Directors make a final decision on the rezoning based on your recommendation. They have a hearing. That hearing is going to be November 1st on the three rezones that we heard tonight.
Oh, I'm, I'm, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking rezoned, Camero's rezoned.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, we're doing, doing our best to keep you as confused as possible.
I'm going to be honest, this, this was a great one that, I mean, it was a great learning experience to have just both of those back-to-back just because it's a lot of information and it just shows that things are going to change.
Yeah.
Will STRs be discussed?
No.
No, it's not part of Camero's.
No, not part of their scope. STRs will not be discussed and wireless communication facilities will not be discussed. Wireless communication facilities are subject to such specific federal laws that they get their own special legal person.
Oh. I just have to die coke then.
Okay.
Any other business anybody would like to discuss? Well, at this time, with no further business, we will, are ready to adjourn. The October 13th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting may have a motion to adjourn.
Selman.
Second.
Thank you.